Yes.
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 Okay, number three, presentation of petitions and other communications. A, introduction of Sarah Morton, new director of Boone County Community Service Recovery Center, and Lorraine Saff is here to introduce her.
You can hear a cackling loud voice. We Boone County Community Service Recovery Center have Boone safer because of our efforts to provide all those 300 adults on probation and about 250 go through the recovery center. I'm not here to tell everybody knows what Lorraine does, but stand up. I'd like to welcome and introduce Sarah Morton, and she is an ideal pushover to show Lorraine out to find my purpose in 2013, and we're training and enjoying Sarah's company for three months, and then she will become the director of Boone County Community Service and Boone County Recovery Center. She knows the territory, she's been at DHS, she's been at high school. We're lucky to have her. She will connect well, take community service to a higher level, and I look at the obituary and say, "Lorraine, I love this program way too much. I'm healthy, but I don't want it on a slippery slope if I should fall face forward." And I look at the obituary, and there are lots of people that die before they're 77. I don't intend to be there. So Sarah, tell them who you are.
I'm Sarah Morton. A lot of your cases I see and recognize. Some I've talked to on the phone many times, Andrea. I don't know that we've ever met, but it's a pleasure to be on board with Lorraine, and I look forward to just kind of picking up and bringing everything into the 21st century. I do have substance abuse background, have been a certified alcohol and drug counselor myself, so Boone County Recovery, we're going to get that up and running in tip-top shape and offer very good services to those probationees and those that come through substance abuse evaluations up on the third floor of the hospital and need the extended outpatient counseling that we can provide up there, as well as from the kids at community service and continue to provide services to the nonprofits and do their community service hours with us and supervise with our staff, to our outstanding police officers that come up and provide a day off and do their probationary supervision to those on probation. I'm really learning the ropes. I can't believe two months have gone past, and this December will be my last with Lorraine. So I just wanted to make sure you know how much I appreciate that the city council has done for what Lorraine has built and put together up there, and that it will continue, and it will, it will move forward. I mean, I think she, there's times where it'll be quiet, and she'll turn to me and say, now, I know she was talking to you, Lucas, but 28 more years, right, Sarah? I got you down for 28 years, right? And I sit there, and I do the math, and I'm thinking, my gosh, she just said that about the obituary, and I'm thinking, I don't know how many is that one? But I'm happy to be on board, and I appreciate you giving us a few minutes of your time to let us visit. Any questions?
Question, thank you.
Perfect. Thank you.
How long are you going to stay there?
Twenty-eight years, Sherri.
I think I found it in blood, I don't know.
To it, that's good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, B, set up public hearing date of December 17th at 7:00 PM for the purposes of announcing progress on Northeast Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project. Call the roll.
Nala?
Yes.
Sherri?
Yes.
Klae?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Glusby?
Yes.
Okay, C, public hearing request from Vision Bank and Cedar Point Golf Course to rezone certain parcels of property from R3 multifamily residential to C1 special commercial. Any written comments? Any public comments?
Yeah? Yes. It's been called a bylaw drive. Of course, the road is bylaw drive, but they're requesting on extremely concerned about the monotraffic out there as I was when the development started out there with their way along this hotel. There's no control on the road whatsoever. The road is all solid until it gets to about my house where it turns gravel. There's a sharp curve there, just waiting for something to happen, along with the fact that, you know, all the traffic coming in and out of barely already is somewhat dangerous just on the fact that nobody ever looks or anyone else. Worrying and concerned about how the traffic flow is going to come out of this new, if it's approved, C1. And as a sideline, just the amount of trash that goes around out there is incredible. What I have to do is run up and take a look at the building. Thank you.
That sign that says local traffic only isn't a big deal, or?
Well, you use the restroom, it's a bit lush. I mean, it has its purpose every night, it's a sign that somebody put out.
Does it run on both ends of it?
I believe so. But it doesn't do any good, nobody, I mean, and how do you define, I'm sorry, how do you define local traffic if somebody out there watching everybody divide and make sure that they are actually local? It's useless. The road was never intended for monotraffic. The main, the people that maintain it, I think did a good job maintaining, but there's just not the budget to maintain it as much as you need to. All I have to do is go out there and take a look at it, probably look at it once in a while. I'm fortunate that I can go the other way.
That bridge had a limit on it?
I believe she has, yeah. It can't have a very big limit.
I think it's three tons, I think.
No, I haven't seen any truck traffic on it, thankfully.
But you're also seeing just cars and pickups.
Cars, yeah, lots of cars.
Who do you think put that sign up that said local traffic only?
I believe it was under request back when this first built out there.
No, I think that's.
It's just in normal monotraffic. I hope we're going to wait, we'll have some numbers for you folks to take a look at and actually know how much traffic is going down that road.
We tried to pay the, this was before my time, I heard they tried to pay the long time ago, the residents didn't want to pay the SSS taxes for it, that's why it's still up on this.
I would like to disagree again, because I believe that people living out there would be not opposed to it, but I think you have a bigger problem with the bridge. I don't know if there's any way to pay it up, and only some full $10 million project to make the bridge to the point that it's not this curve down back up.
Well, we can always make a project and redo that road and do the bridge and say, that'd be great.
I think it's going to look at, and I don't think there's ever been any big improvement.
Well, there's a, there's a will, there's a way. I agree, but is there a big?
Is there actually water running under that bridge, or is that?
Yeah, that's a grid.
Maybe not now, but it's supposed to. A lot of things are drying up right now.
I don't think it ever grows up to be.
Any other comments? Okay, now this public hearing is closed. Okay, number four, report of standing committees. A, policy administration. Uh, next, public safety. No report. Utility committee, Gary.
No report.
Uh, D, economic development committee, Steven. We do, uh, Colonel Irwin.
Uh, thanks, Steven. I had prepared an action form along with recommendation to Mayor and City Council during the Best Park Road project. At our last meeting, we had quite a bit of discussion about the hurdle with the Federal Highway Administration to us. Uh, just today, I found out some new information about a potential funding mechanism to utilize TIP from an urban renewal area that extends beyond corporate limits and encompasses the global investor. Uh, based on that information, Andrea and I had a couple of meetings about some financial strategies. We've talked to Spirit Financial about bond capabilities, and we intended to answer some of our final questions. I've got four very specific questions that need to be answered, believe by our bond council, Alvin Cooney, and unfortunately, we weren't able to get a hold of them today. So I would respectfully request that this item be tabled until the next council meeting, which I believe will be December 17th.
Look, in regards to that, then, if you feel that by that time, we will be able to come up with a vote, and if we come up with a vote at that time, will it, if we would so decide to work, make something work, will that still work in the county's schedule or do you have a chance? I know you've got a lot going on, I'm looking for your thoughts on it.
Things have been changing a little bit day to day. As I've said, I just tossed the recommendation I put together for the meeting, I've spent quite a bit of time on that, with new information. This is now a local project, it's not categorized as a federally funded project, which that was driving some of the rigid schedule that we had before for construction. Because this would now be a local project, it's been explained to me that there's less rigidity in that schedule. There is still some time constraints, we're talking about an amendment to that urban renewal area that I've mentioned to you folks before, that there's a little bit of a time factor there, I talked to the economic development committee about that. I have not been to the county board supervisors, that at some level, if we pursue this TIP funding as a mechanism, to fund a bond to cover that Division One, the 1800 feet, I have not spoke to the county about the thought of us utilizing those TIP funds. Essentially, the general concept is, much like we would do in corporate limits that we did with the Sanitary Sewer Project, where we utilize TIP funds to help pay back a portion of those bonds. When we use TIP ones, when we certify TIP, that means that we're using a portion of tax dollars that normally went to a number of different taxing entities, specifically the city, the school, and the county, when you're talking in corporate limits. In this particular area, just beyond corporate limits, it would be doing essentially the same type of thing, utilizing those tax dollars that did go to those separate taxing entities, and utilizing those funds to help with this economic development project. The main question that we have is determining 100% of the confidence that certifying that TIP that will not have any impact on city promises, not affecting those within corporate limits. And also, number two, making sure that there's some expiration dates on those urban renewal areas. We want to make sure that we're not extending them to those sunset dates on the TIP. So to go back to your original question, how does this fit into the schedule? The first thing we need to do is answer those questions. Number two, if council determines to move forward, then we would have to go to the county immediately and find out if there's any requirements for them to consent to the project. Even if there's not, I feel some need to at least go to them and explain what the plan is, to bring them on board. And finally, then, maybe any adjustments we would have to to those plans before we walk the deal.
Part of the reason I asked that was when we were at the last economic meeting, I think the engineers commented that they wanted to have it as soon as possible in conjunction with when the DOT had their, because they wanted to, even though we're not included with it, they wanted to have it in that same general timeframe. And my thought was, and by no means am I trying to get the cart before the horse, but possibly talk with the county and let them know, you know, what we're researching, and maybe it's such a thing that they can go ahead and still have their letting and use it as some alternates.
Using Division One as an alternate?
Yes, possibly. Uh, and that way, that would allow them to continue to move forward, and whatever our decisions might be, if, whatever it is, it could be used as an alternate. Or if we, if nothing happens, then they still move forward with whatever they do, and we wouldn't be holding that. Something, and it just seemed like, and it seemed like engineers thought it was pretty important, it was a time to matter. Isn't that right? Isn't that what you were talking about, Steven? And then you expect that there is some importance to the time?
I think that, if I'm remembering correctly, there was some discussion about the type of contractors that would have been on the project, and there's typically more at the table if we pull on the schedule.
But our ability to also put it out, it was also streamlined as well, because it'd be a role project now instead of being a federal DOT project. So we still have the same end time period, but the time period getting us there is being cut, so we can take the time that's on.
We can absolutely have those discussions, in fact, that's a great idea, ask them to include that now, because I know that there was also some cost savings discussed, because , you know, federal project may be changing the size of that road a little bit as well.
Well, I would move that we hold up on the decision until the next council meeting in regards to our involvement in the reconstruction of Best Park Road, and also that city administrator be in contact with the county to let them know what we're doing, if in fact they would make a decision to go ahead and start the process.
Call the roll.
Yes?
Yes.
Klae?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Glusby?
Yes.
Nala?
The correspondence regarding transfer of jurisdiction, the second item here. I do believe that Jim did some research on that transfer of jurisdiction, and because there was a stipulation in that original document that said that if the federal funding was rescinded, that that transfer of jurisdiction would go away, then yielding that 20-year agreement voided. So through this process, if we are able to continue to report Division One, we would have to reestablish a new transfer of jurisdiction in order for the city to be able, again, to expend funds beyond corporate limits. The fact that it's TIP dollars that come from that area, that may have a slight difference. But just giving you a heads up, that you may see that document come up again, and if you're wondering, I thought we were going to approve this, I just want to give you a little background as to why that would have to come back to the table.
Okay, and the private department reports, still unofficial?
No report, Your Honor.
Okay, library. Uh, finance officer, Andrea.
In the consent agenda is the annual urban renewal TIP report that we can act upon.
No, I actually, just going to take me a second to follow. If you recall, we talked about this before, this new TIP reporting that has to be done on an annual basis. And you're going to, when this comes up, you're going to look at it, I think it's about 33 years long, and it summarizes all of the different information about all of our TIP districts. We explained to you that the state government, I decided there's some additional information they wanted about TIP, there were some cities within the state that, not my words, but the words of some folks abused the use of TIP. So by asking for this information, how cities use it, they can better get an assessment if it's being used appropriately. Uh, Andrea did a great job, she has done a few things to help streamline the process of creating this document, so kind of embarrassed to say, I think I put in about twice the amount of time, my small portion compared to what she did. Uh, but this is the full report document, it goes through, and in each area, it talks about the particular amendment. Our southeast urban renewal area, of course, is the largest one, and we have a number of different amendments. Each one, it goes through and gives evaluations of what that base, that original base was, and how much we draw upon each year to pay the bonds. This full report, we have available in the administration office for anybody that would like to look at this. Anything that you want to know about city's TIP is contained in this document.
I also have a paper copy if anything's interesting.
So what we're asking for is approval by council for this TIP report to be submitted to the state. We're fortunate this year, everything has to be done and completed by December 1st, and of course, because the first was on the weekend, against the day grace period, if council incurs with approving this, it'll actually be submitted tonight, before we go home. If there are any mistakes contained in this, or even if we did miss the deadline in the state, it was gracious enough to say that for the first year, they weren't going to enforce any penalties. But in the future, this will carry as much importance as our annual finance report that has to be submitted by the first of December each year.
Those people that are producing this, they should have got a deadline two weeks ago. I don't understand, was there more than one town? I only heard the one town.
I think there was one community that certainly brought spotlight upon themselves, but there's been other communities in the past. And to some extent, some of the complaints come from the other taxing entities, too. As I've explained before, I certainly try not to keep anything a secret, that when a community utilizes TIP, they're utilizing revenues that would normally went to those other taxing entities. Now, to some extent, schools are their formula, there is some portion that they are made whole by the state, but there's still some financial impact. General concept, as I've said before, when we do a TIP project, it's to build taxable base, and you can look at a number of our districts, when you see the numbers in here and how much they're on the front, it shows proof that these projects have worked, and that investment makes a positive difference in the road.
Are you and Andrea still counting up your hours on the fourth?
I believe towards so far, with the two of us combined together, I think we have about the neighborhood of 24 or 25 hours. And I think they have to make it 12. I thought it would be a lot more, but.
Well, and like you said, my hours are kind of skewed, because one of the reports that I did, I used for my annual finance report, the county TIP report, and this report, and that report took me 15 hours, but when I got to this report, it only took me eight hours to get all the data and put it.
Because the data was already?
Because the data was already created.
Just got some.
There's no issue, of course, that isn't in the consent agenda, presidential.
Okay, next up, Steve Tierney.
No report.
Okay, economic development director. Uh, director of parks and golf course, John Ross.
I got a couple things, no, you haven't even said anything there. A couple things. We went to the earth moving or the groundbreaking for the high school. Um, I talked to the grounds guy, they found, they moved our Blair Park Memorial Monument there, there were the tiny caps underneath it, so we took that to McCoast Park, right now it's supposed to be open in 2015. So we will put that on our schedule to open in 2015. Uh, the other thing is, right now, we have an agreement with Lion Energy, the industrial park or the business park on South Highway 30, they are in the midst of taking on, putting in new poles, so all those lights will be their responsibility, and we'll take out our ones, and it'll be all Lion Energy's issues out there. Um, the other thing is Christmas lights, they're all up and running, if you see any out, just get ahold of me and we'll get them fixed. So, Wayland's been working really hard on those, trying to get traffic lights, street lights and the Christmas lights all going, so they've really done a good job. That's it.
Any questions? Uh, utility superintendent, Roy.
I'll report.
City engineer, Wayne.
Uh, he's not here, but the proposal that he has on the agenda is asking council to approve us making application for grant funds through SERCP for Highway 30 corridor study. Uh, we've talked to you about this before, that this may become expenditure, just recently, they have some funds available that can be used for study purposes only, so we're requesting that you approve us from the application.
Do they have much of this?
Uh, at this point, he has a round number of 40 to 50,000 dollars.
What do you think, Sherri? Do you have life studies?
Oh, I love studies.
They have, just.
They want it around 40 or 50,000?
They have, they have, I believe it's 80 or 90,000 dollars available for study purposes, and it'll be highly competitive.
It's not going, I hate to say this, it's not going to cost us. We apply for it, it's a grant, but it's the idea behind this, it's not. Which we probably need to have accomplished.
After the meetings, I've already attended three meetings with well over a dozen property owners, business owners in that cohort, and I would say absolutely, a study is worthy, and I will go so far as to say that based on the information that we've heard, and what we can do to bring the DOT onboard, with what some of those business owners would like to see out of that area, it is going to take a study, even if we don't obtain these grant funds. We may certainly have to scale it back from that amount that we're talking about, but we do believe the DOT is going to be substantial hurdle for some improvements needed to be made.
Did we do a study on the report?
Walmart did a traffic study for that whole area, but not out on Highway 30.
Just impact, yeah, primarily their area.
It seems like we talked about that a long time ago.
There was plans, and I don't know if it's approximately 20 years ago, about an overpass at Highway 30 in the storage street. But that, those plans, of course, were shelved based on their feedback from city council.
That was in '70.
Is that what that was in '70?
About '78 or '77, I was on the conversation.
Is it the whole 30, 3030?
Primarily what's, we would be looking, I think for the purposes of this study, it's more of what's within corporate limits along Highway 30. Again, if there's concerns over those prices, and we want to come back and just focus on the area that's most immediate to where our patients is right at right now.
What's the lifespan of the city area right now? I mean, are they 100 years, 50?
That's a good question. I'm not sure what lifespan, it might be traffic generation based on how the city grows, instead of maybe going out that length of time, they might say that as you grow this much, you generate this much traffic here, the type of improvements necessary.
If we move on this, you'll work correctly with the masterway areas instead of just going white over there?
Yes.
I move that we move forward in applying for the grant application for Highway 30 corridor study.
Second. Call the roll.
Yes.
Master?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Glusby?
Yes.
Nala?
Yes.
Sherri?
Okay, next up, director of public safety.
Thank you, Sarah. Two quick items. Tenement Four Storage Street, we're still moving forward, we have a meeting with the representatives of Tenement Eight Storage Street tomorrow, I'll have something to report to you next council meeting. Uh, the second quick item is, if you remember last council meeting, you all approved that agreement for when we demo houses, giving a 25% break on it, we actually have three agreements signed right now for three houses, so it's working itself. Thanks.
Yeah, I think Justin has one quick there.
Thanks. It was just released today that through theme of the fire prevention and safety grants, we'll be, uh, we'll be taking applications December 17th through January 8th. They always have a short period of time, we've done these every year. What the fire prevention and safety grants are is geared towards community involvement, like the smoke detector battery replacement drive. Uh, this year, we had to fund about half of it on our own, we harder provided what they normally provide, and we had overwhelming requests, and so through our trust fund, we were able to purchase the other half. We did the box fan drive this summer, so that grant is for those types of programs, but we've applied for them in the past, have been successful, but again, just looking for council direction. There's no match required, no city funds that we put in for it, so go for it.
Absolutely, incredible for you.
Thanks. Thanks.
Call roll.
Minister?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Lefty? Alan?
Yes.
Yes.
Kirkbough?
Yes. Okay, next up, city administrator Luke.
Yes, um, as you recall, we have changed direction, uh, council decided to step away from seeking an on-staff engineer, so we need to renew the contract for engineering services. And that item is in the consent agenda.
Can I read it, that's a sixty-day knockout to that, correct?
Yes. So if, if we do at some point in time, uh, make that shift and want to seek an on-staff city engineer, we just need to give him that. Which, from the timeframe it took us before, once we start thinking about it, that'll be welcome, of course.
Right.
Luke, I'm gonna have some questions on, on the contract, please, do we do that now, or do we need to...
Actually, right now, if you're ready.
So we don't have to pull it out? Okay. Uh, just, just a couple of things, uh, I looked going through here. So getting, on this thing, they're getting mileage, obviously, it's an eighteen, come up here every day. Ten thousand and ten dollars, three hundred and fifty-two miles a week for fifty-two weeks a year. I guess I just wonder why we have to pay mileage for somebody to come to work for us. We don't really pay anybody else, that just seems like, I know their office is in eighteen, it doesn't feel like, why we need to, to pay them ten thousand dollars to come to work? Since his office is going to be here four days a week. And then the other one that I questioned there or wondered about was, and we've never had this before, profit of five percent. Uh, what, what is that? I mean, isn't the profit going into the company's compensation of eighty-one thousand? I mean, uh, we're paying a hundred and twenty-one dollars an hour, and I'm pretty sure that Wayne doesn't get a hundred and twenty-one an hour. It'd be like, if Gary sent somebody out to work on our plumbing, he charged us more than what he pays the, I'm pretty sure, anyway. Yeah, I, I just, just a few things I was curious about, cause that's a lot of money we're talking about.
Yeah, absolutely, um, and those are good questions. When we originally started this, uh, Greenwood Engineering Services, actually, it was even long before my time, uh, was Engineering Alliance. And, over the years, what they had established was they were simply, uh, offering to the city a pass-through of staff. Uh, where they were simply saying, here's the cost of what we pay to employ this person, we're passing along those costs to you directly. Uh, over the past couple of years, knowing that mileage is a factor, uh, they're simply wanting to say that this is the cost to employ this individual, we're passing it along. The city had talked about going into a process of double hiring our on-staff engineers. The profit of five percent, uh, they have brought up, uh, their concern as an engineering firm, they are not like the city, they are corporate. And for each hour that they have one of their on-staff engineers coming up here to work with the city, those are not per se billable hours, because it was just a pass-through. In other words, um, again, for each, you used, um, a plumbing contractor as an example.
Just because he was...
I, but any type of, of construction company, if all they did was bill the customer exactly what it cost for them to supply that person to be there, there's, there's no profit to be made. Uh, there's, there's no benefit for the company. And essentially, that's what they're asking to put in here, because over the past couple of years, there was no accommodation of that profit.
So in other words, then Wayne is getting about a hundred and twenty-one dollars an hour?
Um, I, I don't know that I spoke to him specifically about what his compensation was.
Well, it's all in how you write it, you could have built a little bit of compensation, you could take the mileage building. It was just this nine thousand dollars there, but...
I'd like to comment on that, Fender, I understand what you're saying. It, it is a large number, but I think the truth of the matter is, any engineering company would much rather have their individuals doing projects than being an in-house engineer for a city. Their profit level for doing projects versus being an in-house engineer is major, and I think that shows here. And it's the potential I am going, I don't know if you caught that or not, but that, that's probably not out of line. They probably could make twice as much, like with projects versus working for us. And, and I know that that's hard to swallow that, I understand it, but, but that's kind of the nature of the East. And, uh, I, I think honestly, they're probably taking pretty good care of us, they wouldn't have to do this. There's, there's other things that they could be more profitable on, but I think they feel like they have a good relationship with the city. And I have no ties to them, but I'm just, just knowing the industry, there's, there's some truth in that.
But some of the projects, when they get into a project, then, when they start doing that, if I'm not mistaken, they get a percentage on that, on that project.
Only if it's a major bid project, yeah. But if they just do a project, I shouldn't say just, like if, if John needs a project handled, they're not going to charge an extra amount to in-house an engineering project for him, or, or for whoever it might be. But if we go out to bid something, then that would be a different situation, that's true.
The police department facade improvements, that's a good example, there was no extra charge, uh, the dam project, uh, there's no added engineering fees for the work that Wayne has put into that, which understandably quite substantial for a lot of hours.
During it, Jake, what's your street, we, we did a lot of work there for events, for sort of...
I would also, yeah, probably what would have been helpful is even for us to go back maybe ten, fifteen years ago, and look at some of the expenditures on the engineer, of what, uh, the city had expended in the given year, even with consulting, even probably, uh, five years, ten years. And what you may find is that this number is actually substantially less for total engineering, it's true. Because in the past, every project that they were asked to assist on, we were paying true engineering fees, not for a contract like this.
Another benefit of this is that we tap into folks, mass, conglomerate people. Like we call Molly Law, we talk, we talk to people in Wisconsin about their water issues, and we talk to a whole lot of their people, and they don't charge us, we just give us advice. Now, if they do a study or something like that, they will charge, so we have a water thing with their... We do, we do get a lot of, a lot of extra.
Fender, there, there are good questions, and to see those numbers that, uh, that are an increase, I think it's absolutely because it's certainly more than a standard three or four percent increase that we might see from where...
Probably like the, the five percent profits, we've been in there before, so that's something that they've had to issue.
Luke, frankly, but I think we're still stating on what we were projecting for our cost of an in-house, weren't we? By the time we added benefits, salary, and transportation costs?
This is, uh, this is actually still a little bit more than what we would have projected.
But that's...
Probably, actually, you could probably look at a portion of the mileage, pretty much what Fender picked out, you could pick out about that fifteen thousand, and that's probably over. Pretty close, it's maybe ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
We're not adding any paid vacation hours, sick time.
No, and, and that's something else that, you know, talking, taking it times forty hours, and I, I can tell you folks a number of times, I've had conversations with Wayne, um, over the weekend, during evenings, so certainly, if I had to estimate a number of hours, I would say a part of these forty hours.
Do we, do we automatically get Wayne, or if Wayne's not available, do we get someone else?
We tried that, and they won't go for it.
Actually, I would say to some extent, we, we've negotiated to hopefully have Wayne, we've gone, there's been different engineers that have been here, and certain people fit really well. And they establish good working relationships, and I would say absolutely, that Wayne is, uh, fits that real well.
So no matter who we get, we're gonna call him.
That's, that's what we warned them, yes.
Long as his name's Wayne, bro.
Yeah, I know.
What's the difference between a city engineer and a FOC engineer? What is the difference?
There's really no difference, an engineer, a PE is a professional engineer either way. Um, when we say city engineer, it's for us describing the role of that individual. They're taking on duties that are similar to what other full-staff engineers are doing in other communities.
What we were looking at before, when we were bringing them in-house, was combining some duties with the water and, and setting in, increasing the duties in-house, so we'd be able to compensate for the cost. But we were finding that our staffing issues changed, and then on top of that, we also decided that we'd be better to have an outhouse person, so we can bring them in as needed, instead of having someone in-house twenty-four seven with maybe not the, not the projects we do on hand.
So then, with FOC, we just have them on the job busy, cause I thought, a while back, that they decided not to have an engineer and just do it by the job. And now it sounds like, like they've got forty hours, we...
Well, that was in regards to the, the big projects, the sewer and the, the trunk lines and sanitation. Now we're getting back in the traffic, roadways, and the, those extra city duties, that's why we had to, that's why they need contract.
There are no other questions, again, when you add on, on the consent agenda?
Okay, number six, consent agenda, are there any items on the consent agenda you'd like removed and discussed separately, and if not, any of motion to approve? Second. Call roll.
Ray?
Yes.
Stevenson?
Yes.
Lefty? Yeah. Kirkbough?
Yes.
Next one?
Yes. Okay, number seven, ordinance, this is A, third and final consideration of ordinance twenty-one eighty-seven, rezoning property within the...
What should we be agreeing?
Second. Call roll.
Ray, uh, Stevenson?
Yes.
Lefty?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Kirkbough?
Yes.
Esther?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes, move through that. Call roll.
Lefty? Yeah, Alan? Kirk?
Yes.
Kirkbough?
Yes.
Next one?
Yes.
Ray?
Number eight, I have nothing to say, and number nine, council member Thomas.
Everybody was, thanks to the Christmas decorations, it's very good. And the people looking up.
Right, great, great deal. Uh, and then council Thomas. Any public comments or items on the agenda?
Yeah, um, okay, I was reading this in minutes, that we're gonna hire CDS to do billing, and I guess they don't understand what our water department does then, are we gonna not have a water department anymore, or are we gonna reduce staff like they've done in other departments? I don't understand why CBS is gonna be doing the billing.
They're going to be, uh, yes, well, we've contracted with them to do is utility billing and remittance. Uh, we anticipate that probably happening sometime around the month of February or March.
And then the water bills?
Yes, yep, water sewer bills that go out. Uh, as part of that project, we talked about rearranging the duties of the individuals in those offices. Uh, partly to do meter reading. Uh, right now, we have some of our public works staff that do that, that may be a possibility. Uh, there's also some other departmental help, both in administration side and even, uh, building officials' office, uh, that we talked about rearranging duties.
Okay, I guess, when I see that they reduced staff in the park and staff in the city of street department, but then we seem to increase the staff in city park.
It wouldn't be increasing staff, no.
Well, it is if you're having somebody else do the billing, and then you're having these people do other things. That'd be the same, same sort of thing, I guess.
Where have we reduced staff in the park?
Uh, Neil old and died, um...
Well, we re, we just, it took a while to rehire him, but it, it did take us a while, we rehired Kyle. Um, we've always had the same amount.
They've always had, they, they never...
I don't think maybe you caught what Luke said, though, but by doing what we're doing, it will free up staff, and it will possibly allow public works to not have to read meters and be able to do more public works things. And it will allow the staff to be able to go out and do some of those items, so it's, it is spreading people...
It's gonna be done over the phone lines and some sorts of...
Uh, we actually went to radio rates now, where the, they can get in a vehicle and just drive the streets, and they will, they have a transmitter, and they just report to the computer. And then another thing council wants is to get more aggressive with linked accounts, people that don't pay their bills. We've had people that haven't paid their bills for quite some time, we, we didn't have the timing or the staff to go shut the water off to get aggressive with the phone accounts. Now, if they do our meter reading, it will freeze up four or five days, and we can get aggressive, along with our mean replacements and stuff like that, so...
My understanding is that... I think our administrative staff too has been overloaded with the new tip things, reports and things that they've had to do. And it, every day, something comes up that goes to Andrea and Luke are having to do.
I had asked on the tip, the state told, when they passed the new tip reg, leg, legislation back last year, they said they pay on average about, what was it, four, four hours, six hours?
For the...
For the tips, yes.
So, and they estimated the overall, I believe, the twelve hours?
Overall, twelve hours, on average, here in different cities, on their cost for tip recording. Our cost right now is at twenty-four. We had to pay twenty-four man-hours to record the regulations on tip that the state passed in the last session. So, that was part of the increase on city hall staff this year, and that happens every year when the legislature is done. So, we're trying to spread it out, and then get public works out, and then on top of that, our part-time, in the summer, we were having to utilize the block more than we needed on stuff, and we want to get the public works back out on the streets, so...
Yes.
I remind you, just before we get to...
Any other public comments?
Thank you, just a reminder, I've got a mentor shop at the office this Thursday night, uh, at Community Goings, start at five o'clock, uh, taking about a hundred and five kids.
Five o'clock at half?
Yeah, be at, need to be there by five at Community Goings.
How many are left?
Thank you.
That's a few more than last year, isn't it?
Uh, about the same.
Is it?
I think I read, what time was it, Mr.?
I don't know.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
I have a question, you know, Lion Energy does this thing from, what is it, November to April? Do we do that with the water, where if you have children in the house, you can't shut it off? Do we do that or not?
The, the predictable program until it gets littling answered.
Yeah, do we do that? I was just curious.
I guess, I guess...
I don't think I've ever...
I've never heard that, I don't...
I, I didn't know if we did it, but I know of Lion Energy, um, they won't shut off your electricity if you have children in the house.
I think it has to keep...
Yeah, that's a law.
And freezing temperatures.
Yeah, they, when March, April hits, and it hits a median temperature, then they can cut you off, but we have, no policy there.
No, we do not.
I just wanted to... I know we have quite a few people that are down on their luck in this town, but I just...
Okay, any other public comments? Not any motion going to close session, assuming Iowa Code twenty-four one seven three to discuss contract negotiations, see you. Second. Call roll.